Recognizing January 29th through February 4th, 2023 is Catholic Schools Week. I will actually present that to the Catholic School tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Commissioners, have you had a chance to read that one over? And then also, we have one here, proclamation for Black History Month. That we will be, if you're okay with that, we'll move that on to Wednesday's agenda also. We'll do that. Thank you. That'll move us on to item two, which is our review of our monthly reports for December 2022. Commissioner Kayler, would you like to go first?
Sure, you can either go first. On page 14, I appreciate the form that Melanie that you're using here that gives us kind of an expenditure by department and it gave us the whole breakdown. Just thank you for the form. I think it's clear, concise. I appreciate this in a really non-accountant, on a non-accountant view. So, thank you. All of those are helpful. And it really does give us a snapshot on what we spent. And when I say we spent, we spent taxpayer money last year and how much taxpayer money was spent. So, encourage the public to review that and review all of this. I also appreciate the fact, and I know that Commissioner Skidmore and possibly everyone here will want to discuss sales tax. It appears as though in the last two years, we've had growth of about, oh, 14%, 13% of our sales tax revenue, which is, which is good, and we appreciate that. And that tells me that people are, A, shopping here, and B, that internet sales tax is actually being recouped here in our community. So, I am glad to see that number. On page 30, I want to highlight that we did have what appears to be 56 new applications for homes in the year 2022. Forty-three of those were single-family homes, and 13 of those were manufactured homes. And while I don't believe that number exceeds what we had the year before, but I absolutely could be wrong on that, it's always good to see homes going up in our community. And I'd be really interested to know if any of those homes are actually for sale or if they already have, if they're built and they already have individuals living in them. That's good, too. On page, who's here for the drawing? Oh, Chief. On page 37, sorry. I was just looking at your year-end review. And so, how do you determine your pre-incident value versus your losses? Because there's $11 million in a pre-incident value, but the losses were listed at just under half a million.
So, for instance, you take a house, you take whatever the county has on their, it covers a website, and then the damage caused by a fire. The pre-incident value is the cost of the home and then what it damages. And the damage is more or less, I wouldn't say estimation, educated.
Is it structural?
Yeah, it's anything, RV.
Not content, is it contents?
Yeah, it's everything. Just trying to show, you know, what had possibly been saved.
Yeah, we're trying to invest, really, for how much the fire department. And that your average for calls, you were at calls in less than six minutes from the time that you received it to the time that you got there, right? Lights and sirens, you were there. Excellent.
That's overall. I mean, we have to meet a certain percentage, 85% under five. Overall, together, it's.
Not that much higher. Good. Thank you. Please tell your department. Thank you. Appreciate that. I also noticed, and I like the breakdown that you talk about your incident category, which is on the next page, 38. It appears as though there is a high spike right as school is starting over the lunch hour and right as school is getting out. Is that fair? And it may not have anything to do with that. I mean, directly related.
Typically, it doesn't. I mean, we could run the reports on those type of things. Typically, it's medical calls, people waking up in the morning, and then just normal people out during lunch hour. When I hear a call, because they got kids or this happens.
It's good to know that trend. Chief Weingartner, on page 47, I appreciate the fact that you did list where our Part One crimes have been in the last five years. And although Part One crime is up compared to 2021, it looks like you have some overall good news. Yes?
That is.
You want to summarize that for me?
Yeah, that's really good to summarize it. You know, when people see, first of all, the violent crime is so low in the community that when you have one incident, it could grow at 10%, look like a pretty dramatic increase. But when you start totaling it all together, the reality is that Ottawa is still a pretty safe community. But we did have a 25.9% increase compared to last year's from 21's crime for in 22, and almost all of that was directly related to thefts. So, thefts from unlocked motor vehicles, theft of personal property, and a lot of shoplifts at Walmart in particular. And so, the increase wasn't really residences or businesses being broken into. It wasn't the fact that, you know, we had a homicide for the first time in over 10 years last year. That does play a factor into it, but it did not really show why that increase is so important. So, that's why I did that five-year average, is to show people that, yes, we talked, you heard me for, since 2018, when I started coming before you, telling you that it's lower this year. Eventually, that low has got to stop. That was January 1st of 2022. We started to go back up. So, now hopefully, that pendulum is going up again, and we'll start to see it come back down again in 2022.
Thank you for that summary. I think that that, maybe one more space. On FCDC's report, 178. Paul, I appreciated you giving us a report on how the year in and out with FCDC. It appears as though you had a surplus this year. And we had some conversations the year before about surpluses and about you taking so much of the allocation that the city had given to you and putting it into a specialty fund. Where are we at with that surplus?
What we were able to do is through the surpluses that are building in the operating, at the beginning of the month, I was able to move 50,000 into another CD. And that's where we kind of truly set aside funds and CDs. So, we basically added 50,000 to that reserve.
And what do you anticipate or what do you?
Would we use that?
Yes.
Ideally, that money is there. So, if we have a project that we need to contribute to, to help entice them, that's what, that's the worst to draw that.
Do we utilize any of those funds last year, 2022? Any of those funds that were enticement for businesses?
No, I'm kind of thinking of when we get to a point where we're really close and we need another nudge, that those funds are there. Say if they, if we need to sweeten the pot, say, hey, we'll cover all the permit fees for the city. So, FCDC pays those fees or just something like that. That's kind of a deal closer is how I kind of envision it. So, yeah, I was happy we built that up and were able to move another 50 more in the reserve. So, that was a good outline for us.
Excellent. Thank you. I think that that concludes my comments and questions for the day.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Graves?
I have no questions today.
Thank you. Mayor Prokhorin Skidmore?
Okay, I'll just kind of go backwards on here, start with Chief Weingartner on that page 49. Yeah. So, define robbery. Is that strong arm? Is that?
It encompasses all robberies. So, that would be a strong-arm robbery, which generally would be one where a weapon isn't displayed. Or an armed robbery is one where one would be displayed. And most of your armed robberies like that, the general kind of idea is like a business robbery, where somebody will walk into either a bank, a convenience store, or another business. And we had no commercial robberies. We haven't had one in a long, long time. All of the ones you see before you are individuals where property was taken by force or threat of force by one person from another.
Okay, all right. So, that doesn't throw into the theft side. If they steal something from them, that's not the same as theft, I guess.
That is correct. It's not.
Different category. Okay, good. And you're right about that. You can have one thing, and it skews the percentages because we have such a few numbers. And so, I appreciate you bringing that up. You're right. That's a, you got to look into the details, not just the percentage increases. And that gets key. So, thanks for saying that. You're right. Then we'll go back to page 22. Not sure where that even was. I think it was the sales tax, too, wasn't it? All right, let me see what my question was. I just wanted to echo the same comments. Commissioner Kayler said that it's a current CD book that 1.7 million, we almost did last year, I've done it this year, or 7.1, 7-plus sometimes, I should say. And so, I guess the state sales tax reduction in food, that doesn't affect us. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't affect local sales tax. It's the state portion of the sales tax.
It's the state portion. That's why I was saying it's so good. Okay. Thanks for that. And, yeah.
Is that sales tax, Blaine, is that not distributed out like the special highway and some of those sharing programs that we get?
Only the county's portion of sales tax is shared.
Okay, okay. Good. Thank you. And then I was looking at page 20 here with our funds and just to see the average rate we're getting on the Kansas municipal investment pool. And I don't know, this would be something I just kind of like to see sometime is what was our total interest earned on our idle funds from '22 versus '21? I don't know if we have that easy number to look up. Not necessarily today, but just to kind of see how much we're earning in '22 versus '21 overall. That figure goes into an account, I guess, or general fund. And so, I forgot those. But that'd just be something, don't spend a lot of time on it, but just, I'm kind of curious of the difference of what we have experienced from '21 to '22. It'll be interesting to see in '23 how we do as well. So, looking forward to seeing those numbers. Yeah, I'll get, you're here. Thank you for being here. I'll get with you sometime. I know I've got a little more time now, but going over some of the funds and distribution. I do like the fact that we're laddering these funds in different maturities and especially overnight money. We don't have much in there now, but earning 3% is a pretty good deal. So, I like that idea. So.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind, our treasurer is prepared to give you an update because by the time you get these reports, we're already a month in. And changes have been made, and we have somewhat of a strategy change. So, if you wouldn't mind, just a brief update.
Sure.
We could spend a whole hour doing this for a time.
I will not talk for the entire hour. It's going to be brief. So, we have been spending, and we wanted to share with you that some dedicated time looking at bettering our strategy. So, while we've not made a full transition to our new strategy, our plan involves keeping a more close look on, like, we're looking at 12-month average of expenses, rolling average. And so, we're trying to keep three times our average monthly expenses in our operating account and then being more aware of how we have our idle funds spread out.
Look at these rates. They're incredible. So, recently, can you give us any updates on what the rates today, and I know they're starting to hover, come down at all?
Of course, I brought the rates with me. And we actually sent two investments out. We had two maturities in the last week, so we sent them out to local banks. They got those back, and they will be going to local banks, not to the KMIT. But the KMIT rates are good. The stated, like, the public rates that banks have to offer are actually up this week from where they were last year, week when we sent out the bids. So, last week's one-year was at 4.66%, and this week's is at 4.72. And we did secure 4.66% from a local bank for investments.
That's one year?
Mm-hmm, one year.
Good.
So, yeah.
What was the other one? 4.76 was coming?
4.72 is this week's one-year required. So, if I sent out a bid this week, that would be the percentage. I sent them out last week.
Fantastic. That's a good spot. Okay.
Yeah. I am seeing the one-year and slower going up and the longer term going down, which I think we had talked about expecting.
Good. Inverted still, that's okay. What is the longest term that they came up, do you know? Do they offer like a five-year or a four-year or anything longer?
They do offer a long-term, like, I want to say it's like a five-year rate, but state statute with our current policy that we have limits us to 18 months or, no, two years or less on our investments.
That's what I'm kind of watching to see. If rates start going down, it might be better to go longer term and keep that earnings longer. So, that's just to watch, but I think you're doing a good job with that. So, good.
Any other questions?
Good. Thank you. And going backwards still, too, Sarah brought this up again, too, about those charts or the budgets. And it looks like everything we've got, we were under budget last year on everything it looked like. And so, I just want to commend the department heads. I know the money's there to spend, but if you don't do it just because it's there, you do a good job of the financial management. So, all department heads, it's a good job. You've been under budget. That's always a good thing for the citizens to see how we're using their money. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Blaine?
You stole mine right at the end. But yeah, I did like seeing the percentages, as you said, be, you know, our percent of budget spent kind of across the board looked good. And that's always a good thing to see. Yeah, I do like the interest rates as well and just kind of earnings, you know, like you said, the earnings at maturity, when you start adding those up, there's several hundred thousand dollars there that they've been sitting idle. I think I would have been remiss to leave those just in a checking. On page 30, planning and development, I just noticed our number of new builds, single family, was up from 34 in 2021 to 43 in 2022, which is pretty awesome for, you know, our housing issues kind of in town. Just that alone, I think, has really helped. And then I think that was the only other thing I had was on, yeah, on the budgets I'm hitting. I think Parks was the only one that I saw by department that was over budget, but everything else was under. And so, that was a time there. So, I didn't have anything else.
It's always difficult to go last because with all the good commissioners in front of you, they tend to grab all your questions ahead of schedule. The department heads put a lot of time into for us to have this information, to be able to spread to anybody and everybody that asks us how Ottawa's doing, anybody who's listening. This is public information. So, please, you know, reach out for it and read through it and see the wonderful things that are happening in our community. And as I do every month, if there's any department heads that would like to come up and tell us some good news about anything that's going on. Why does nobody look at me when I look around?
I was ready to get up.
Thank you, Olivia. I was looking for you. I knew you'd come up.
Every month.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, just something that I'm super excited about, that Ottawa Main Street's about to roll out, is that with my connections at Ottawa, the OU Media Lab Club, it's like a club, and the OU Marketing Club, so the OU Marketing Club and the OU Media Lab, sorry, they are going to create graphics and advertising for local small businesses. So, I think that that's a great way of getting more OU students downtown and as well as creating that portfolio for OU students, as well as it's a win-win-win for everybody. So, I have a meeting with the students on Wednesday, and then we'll be ready to knock out some graphics and all that kind of good stuff. So, I, there's a couple of professors that are helping out with it, and as long as me, I'm kind of the middleman of, hey, what do you need? Okay, that kind of good stuff. So, I'm super excited about that, as well as throughout the month of February, we have that roundup to make a change. So, low five, low amount of profits are going to benefit from that. We originally wanted it to be much bigger and have credit card and figure out the Venmo and that kind of stuff, but it's a headache. And so, we wanted to make sure that it's worth my time as well as time for using local nonprofits. And so, I still found it really important that we still continued on to make it a thing, even though it may not be as big as originally possible. But I'm looking forward to that and seeing as a starting point for something bigger. Yeah.
Just want to say anytime we can enhance our relationship between Ottawa University and downtown city hall. It's always a good thing. So, I appreciate your suggestion, your idea, whatever it came from, to incorporate those people and to help our people. So, that's always good news.
It's exciting. I know a lot of my friends in the media center staff are really looking forward to it as well, just to get more experience and with a variety of shops. I mean, we have Take It Outside, where it can be outside stuff, and then there's hair salons, any help. And so, it's a good variety of things that students are going to be able to work on.
Good. Great.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Maybe I can always count on you to come up.
You know it. Every month.
Anybody else? All right.
All right.
Well, thank you all again, certainly, for, you know, the hard work that you put in throughout the month to get us this review. All right. That'll move us on to item three, which is our continued review of Hidden Lakes subdivision preliminary plat phase one. Director Landis, I'm going to, I'm going to actually bring the public comment up first. That way, we can kind of get the public comment out of the way, and then we can bring you up to do that. Gary, if you want to come on up, I'm going to read this real quick, though. Subject to the above restrictions, persons wish to address the city commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as the agenda item is called. Person wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under jurisdiction of city commission may do so at the time where called upon by the mayor. Comments on personal matters and matters pending in court or in other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers limited to three minutes. Any presentation is informational purposes only. The governing body will take all your comments under advisement. Gary, welcome.
Gary Harris, 1801 South Princeton. At the last meeting, I had given you some figures in reference to the pipe that is going to take all of the drainage off of my property that I get from Hidden Lakes. I gave you some incorrect information. I told you that that was a 48-inch pipe that takes that water, based on information that I had been given, and I had not verified it. I have since verified it, and it's actually only a 42-inch pipe, which means that it is going to be running at 98% capacity, based on what the civil engineer for Hidden Lakes told me their discharge structure pipes were going to be. So, I just wanted to point that out, that there was an error in the numbers that I gave you, but I have run them again. And unfortunately, it made it worse, not better. That's all I got.
Thank you, Gary. All right, Gary Gerlandis?
Thank you. And Director Jarvis here as well, and I think we can tag teaming information that we need to share with you. So, the item that's in front of you is actually a request for you to consider the variance related to the Hidden Lakes subdivision preliminary plat phase one. And typically, the preliminary plat would be approved by the planning commission, and it was taken to the planning commission. They did approve it with the conditions that the variance had to be approved by you, which that's standard process. So, because there's a variance, and that is the streets with 419th Street, that's why it's even in front of you. Typically, this wouldn't come in front of you except for that. So, the request is for you to consider that variance at your next regular meeting and approve the preliminary plat. And since our last conversations, we have had internal conversations with the development team, both internally and the developer and their entire team, about some of the questions and concerns that were raised at the last meeting. And we have, I think, worked through most, all of the questions that we had for them. There are a couple of outstanding comments to be figured out before the final plat is ever considered by the planning commission. But otherwise, I believe that we're comfortable with the direction that this whole project is moving ahead. So, with that, do you have questions about the preliminary plat and the variance with the width of 19th Street as it's been presented to you?
I guess, did we get that resolved about that turn lane or that?
So, I want to address that next, but that's not part of the original ask or the item that you would have, that you would be considering on your regular agenda.
Commissioners, any questions about the variance?
Do you have anything to add?
Please.
Do you see any issues with it at this point before we get to Wednesday's meeting? If you do have questions for Wednesday's meeting, please let us know.
Yes, absolutely. Now, we did want to give you an update. At the last meeting, you had asked to see conceptual drawing of the entrance and exit off of Princeton. And originally, the conversation was brought to you at the last meeting. And so, we did do some work on that. And Director Tharp has probably a little more information on that, and we do have a conceptual drawing for you to take a peek at. And this is not part of the approval of the item, but because it was brought in front of you, we wanted to make sure that you had an update on this.
Okay, this is not the latest drawing, and that's okay. This is a concept. And what we're looking at is we will keep the northbound, if you're coming from the south, we will keep Princeton Street northbound. We will keep it open. And so, what we will be looking at is where you see this green area here? There will actually be a lane in here that will allow you back on Princeton Street. When we get here, we will actually bend this.
Sorry, Commissioner, this, the drawing they have is actually on our packet, page 113.
It is. That is the correct one. And again, even this drawing is a concept. So, staff and our city engineer are working on this. It's a work in progress. We're going to make it as good as we can. But this drawing that you have in your packet is conceptually how we perceive this. What it does is it eliminates, it eliminates any kind of movements coming back to the south that would be across to 19th Street, going to Price Chopper, making that U-turn, that all of those movements, you know, are perceived as the more dangerous movements. And what we're looking at here, we believe restricts those movements. Now, will it ever happen? Will somebody go the wrong way on that? Okay, I'm not going to tell you that won't. I can't do that. But for the most part, we believe this helps solve the issues that we have, that have been discussed with us.
So, the gray area is where they propose, where they go or access?
The gray area through the green is the access onto Princeton Street, and that's one way. That's going north only. From the south, you can go north. From the north, you cannot come up to this corner. We have created another outlet 250 feet back that lets you out. Now, there's a couple of driveways that are going to have to back out and turn and go north, either to Princeton Street or to 17th Street. But it's a difficult situation, to say the least. And as I said, this is a work in progress. As we move through this, if we see ideas, thoughts that work better, that's exactly what we'll do.
And what does the north shaded area do for you?
The north shaded area?
Yeah.
That's where it goes back up onto Princeton Street.
You only go north on that.
Only go north. That's one way. And everything that we do going back up to Princeton Street will be to allow only that north movement. There will be no entrance back here. The only entrance onto Princeton Street is back where it is right now. The only entrance onto Princeton Street is back where it is right now.
And as you mentioned before, the terrain there is much steeper than the farther south you hit. So, it's a substantial change, making that kind of half roundabout there.
Yeah, and there is a fairly severe elevation change that we will have to deal with.
Excellent opportunity to put some kind of "Welcome to Ottawa" sign or something like that. There's elevation or something like that.
Absolutely.
Have we had any discussions with the developers about taking on some of the costs that we might incur for this, for these changes?
We have, we had discussion with the developers. This concept is really new. We had discussion with the developers, and they were willing to do some sort of turnaround type of movement and be partners in that. I believe that the developers with this concept will also be willing to be partners in this. That is a negotiation that is ongoing.
And then we spoke to the homeowners along here, or shown this to them? Or how far along are we on communication to the homeowners?
Again, this is conceptual, and I don't think we will go to the homeowners until we've made a solid decision. This is, this gives the residents that had concerns, this gives everything that they had asked for.
If they want to go north on south, they can do that on that street front of their home still. And this just allows them, like you said, the same opportunities they had going either direction they had before, right?
It's not, yeah, it's not a complete two-way street, because we want to eliminate this movement up on the very end, on the very south end. But nonetheless, we've created an option to make that north movement.
Sorry, please.
Had a lot of concerns, again, like espresso, we had a lot of concerns about people either going the wrong way as you come up to that south end, or knowing they were going the wrong way because they found a shortcut to get into Price Chopper parking lot, or even 19th Street going the other way. And so, the hope is, is that we have eliminated that movement, but still left all of the options really that were there before.
So, Director Tharp, you said, you mentioned it's conceptual at this point. Are you looking from any direction, for any direction from us at this point? And I'm not saying a yes or no, or are you just looking for, you know, we like it kind of thing? If there's any tweaking after we have some discussion with, you know, maybe the residents or anything like that, that we do?
If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm happy to take them to our, to our city engineer. Happy to try to address some of those. Otherwise, this is what you hire us for.
I drove out there, and I, you know, I'm thinking about these things along here. If I'm wanting to go south, just going north on me, I would probably go right to the intersection, go straight north on that road, go to the intersection where there's a light, turn right if it's a red light, I can. Whereas if they get on Princeton here, it seems like it's a little more cumbersome. But if that is something that the homeowners want to have that option to, I guess it's something we need to consider.
There was concern from the residents about it not being a two-way street. And it's not exactly a two-way street with what we've offered here, but it's hard to keep it clear to the end, a two-way street. The biggest concern, I believe, that we heard is not being able to go north if you were coming from the south. This addresses that, plus offers an option to get up onto Princeton Street.
Yeah, I think this is a good start. I think it takes care of some of the issues that have been mentioned before and also prohibits some of that movement into Price Chopper, because you're scooting that farther, farther north. So, hopefully, that'll prohibit them from making that decision. Not everybody, but the majority.
Yeah, and people going down that street unfamiliar, you know, it's, it helps avoid that movement, too. I think that's the big one. The people that live there, they're not, probably not going to make that movement. They know how dangerous it is. But, you know, people that are unfamiliar, it helps eliminate some of that.
Well, and you mentioned that we could possibly have 24 new houses in there, new residents that don't drive that direction very often. So, it may be difficult at first to.
Yeah, you get delivery drivers, you know, whoever it might be, trash trucks, you know, whatever it might be down in there, the, you know, they're not familiar, you know, new on the job, whatever that may be. And you can have some movements that need to be controlled in some way.
I think it's kind of like when you come out of Freddie's Drive-Thru. It's very obvious you got to turn right. They've got the curb set up there and some rocks, I think. So, it's very obvious.
You have to try really hard to move the other way when you have. Somebody hasn't done that. Someone's done it, I'm sure.
Coats is another example. And this creates, you know, without being able to do, you know, some of the mushroom island type of things that we see in other places, this creates kind of that same idea.
Commissioners, any comments or questions that you have towards Director Tharp's on this conceptual drawing, any others?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Director Landis, you mentioned the variance. I guess we never really had that discussion about moving it. Is you wanting us to possibly move it on to our Wednesday's agenda, correct? So, Commissioners, since we didn't have any, I don't think I made that comment earlier.
No, you didn't.
Okay, sorry. Commissioners, I know we asked earlier if there were any other questions or comments that we wanted to make on the variance at this point. Nobody spoke up, so hearing nothing, are we okay with moving the variance in the preliminary approval discussion onto Wednesday's agenda?
This is strictly for the 19th Street we're talking, right?
Yeah, just the variance.
The variance, okay, yeah.
And you said on that final plat doesn't come back to us, correct? Of subdivision?
Right.
Yeah.
It goes to the planning commission.
It does not come back to us, okay.
Hearing none? Yeah, we'll move it, we'll move it on to Wednesday's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I'll move us on to item four, which is our electric rate discussion with Director Landis.
And Director Tharp.
And Director Tharp. Can you move up here, so I didn't know if you wanted to join in?
Hey, he doesn't get to choose.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. So, we had our initial conversations about the electric utilities and our utility fund balances and the need for an increase to our rate structure back in December. And we wanted to bring back to you and start this conversation again. We took some time to do some review that we had had conversations about in our previous meetings. So, as a reminder, the electric utility is one where it is an enterprise fund and that the user fees only are what drives and takes care of all of the production and distribution for the electric utility. And in our previous conversations, we had presented to you a couple of different options, but we had landed mostly on the option for a 6% annual increase to, over the next five years. And in our discussions, we talked about whether or not there were some other options that we might have that would impact some of our large power users, and that's where we focused our attention. So, the rest of our recommendation really hasn't changed. Next slide, please. So, and what we provided to you in the packet is, it's fairly limited as far as information, because we know you had everything from our previous discussions. But essentially, the base charge that is already existing would have no change. And the energy charge, which is what you would consider your regular monthly rate for your usage charge, would be a 6% annual, a 6% increase annually between 2023 and 2027. And then, this is the part that impacts only your large power users. So, within that structure, they have a demand charge. And in our initial presentation to you, we included a 6% increase there as well. We had just rolled it on to all of the charges. And when we had that conversation, we weren't sure what we would be able to do differently for an impact for our large power users. And this was the change that we focused on, so not increasing the demand charge. Next slide, please. So, this is the same summary that you are, have seen previously, but it does have an updated table regarding the large power users or large, labeled large business, but really, it's large power users. Some small businesses do have larger power usages each month, but this is just exactly what we just talked about. And the two classifications that you'll see have had a slight change. So, annually, it decreases your largest power users about $5,000 to $6,000 per year. And your large business, that's the first classification, that at 120,000 kilowatt hours with a 600 kilowatt demand, it does reduce that about $300 annually for them by not increasing the demand charge for their usage. But for the largest business in here, I think that our five-year total was 240. This lowers it to 205 over the span of five years. And again, those are all just estimates based on their current power usage. And we, all we can do is apply those averages across future years, because we don't know exactly what that usage will be. Do you, well, let me, let's go to the next slide, then we can come back to this. So, this looks really small up on the screen, but it is in the packet. This is very similar to what we provided for the other utilities as well. What we went ahead and did was provided to you the rate resolution itself and updated all the classifications, so you could see that and what it might look like. And this is the table that shows what it would look like for each of those classifications, or we picked one out of each of them. So, for residential, you're looking at a change, a monthly change of $4.75. For a typical or average residential usage, for an average small business usage, it's a monthly change of $12.12. And for an average large business, it's 36.06 per month change. And I think this is important, because, you know, we've talked about a lot of numbers, but the next slide actually shows you the difference between our summary of applying this electric increase in addition to the water and wastewater increases that we've already, that's already come to you and has been approved. So, monthly, that's what, these would be the changes for each one of those classified areas, or average residential, average small business, and average large power business. So, $10.79 would be an impact potentially to your average residential user for all three utility increases, and that's per month. That is really where we landed with the, with the conversation to bring back to you. We'd like to hear any questions you might have or concerns.
I guess this will take away the necessity for the fuel rate adjustment. Is that something that, I know we showed that chart several months ago, about all the different times we had to have that added to the electric bill. And will that eventually somehow go away with these increases? Or will that still be out there as a possibility?
That's a really great question. I'm glad you asked that. Do you want me to answer? You look like you had another.
No, no, that was out.
Okay. So, we do have an internal team between finance and utilities that is working on what that might look like in a way to be able to average or to calculate that on an ongoing basis, based on what's happening in the fund overall. Whereas right now, it's a fairly static calculation. It's the same every month. But they're looking at what that might look like with these changes that are being made or potentially being made. And even without rate changes, how they could structure that differently, so we can make sure we're capturing the right, making sure that we're capturing the right type of charge every month. So, that is not included in here. We haven't made any changes. There really isn't a rate associated with that ECA that's in the resolution other than the method by which we calculate right now. But that could change, or we'd have a better improved process to bring to you at some point. And I think that's also, we had had previous conversations. This is not a done process. This is just typically, this is answering that usage rate. But we talked about our classifications, how businesses fall within a small to large classification. We've had all those conversations, and those are ongoing. We've talked about engaging with an outside agency to help us analyze that, to collect some of that data for us and analyze it. And we would still want to bring back some suggestions to you on that. That would not really impact this, but it would have an impact on those users within those current classifications, potentially.
And if I can, I would also say, with regard to the ECA, keep in mind that ECA can be positive or negative. And so, it is there not only to adjust the costs we may incur to pick those up, but if we've overestimated somewhere or another, that can also be a negative to where it adjusts in the customer's favor at that point. I say in the customer's favor, I guess we're all in this together. But, but, but there's a positive and a negative side to it. And so, it's not just there to pick up extraneous costs. It's also there to make sure that we're not collecting too much.
Do you have other questions about the calculations or what we brought back to you?
Director Landis, as I mentioned before, the large power concerns me still. It's, to me, it's a significant increase to industry around here. And I know in the competitive times that we have with what's going on north of us and everybody else who's trying to fill their industrial parks, I certainly don't want to entice anybody around us to go sit at a table with somebody else. And I only say that because I want the commissioners to know how I feel, that they might want to think about that, too. And they may be perfectly fine with that. I'm not saying anything's wrong with it, that's just my opinion.
I think it's worth it, too, to let you know that we took the opportunity to meet with a business that fits in the very highest portion of our categories. And, you know, a lot of our conversations centered around the need of high need for the use of electricity in making their operations more efficient for them. And so, that, I believe that that's where some of those operation impacts are going. And they were aware that they had a high electric usage and that it did not anticipate that that would come down at all, especially, you know, based on what their newest efficiency methods are. And so, we really concentrated on making sure that they didn't have concerns. And this one particular business is, you know, loves being in our community and plans to stay here for a long time. So, we can have more conversations with other businesses, and we're happy to do that. I think that's probably a great practice to go out and talk to them about their concerns and the needs and things that we might be able to help them with. And as a side note, there was one thing that came up in our conversation, and we thought, oh, we didn't even know that was a problem for you. That might be something we can just easily fix for you. And it actually had a much higher and very significant cost for them above this. And so, they were more focused on, on that being one of their biggest challenges. And so, those are great conversations to have with them.
You can even follow the conversations with following people after they check with our kilowatt charge perhaps, or other, what other factor do they look at? I know there's quite a few listed there.
Yeah, utilities are one of the factors that they'll consider, sure, among the plethora of things. But, yeah, utilities are a factor.
Would it be in the top half or bottom half of their concerns? Or do you know?
It depends on the industry, and, you know, if it's a big electric user, then it maybe goes up. You know, if they're a big water user, it probably goes, you know, depends on different factors like that.
Well, Director Landis, thank you. Not being privy to those conversations, I'm glad that you were able to pass that on to us. And thank you for reaching out to the, you know, that individual, that industry, because, as you mentioned, I mean, that struck up another conversation. And certainly, if we can, we can help them out on another course, it may offset some of the burden that they endure on this.
Well, I will tell you that the way that we approached this was so that you had an opportunity to discuss it again if you would like, or move it on to an upcoming agenda to approve that rate resolution by including it in there. That gave you that opportunity to make a decision one way or the other. We're happy to do either for you, whichever you would, whichever way you'd like to proceed. So, we can move it on. One option would be move it on to the Wednesday's February 1st meeting. One option would be move it on to the Wednesday's February 1st meeting agenda, because the rate resolution that's in here is largely the same. I think there was a few minor tweaks that our city attorney had suggested, and I can give that to you. And then, or we have the opportunity to bring it back to you for yet another discussion or wait until the 15th or beyond.
Commissioners, how would you like to proceed on the electric rate resolution? Do you want to see it again, or would you like to move it on to Wednesday's agenda?
I guess for me, I'm fine with moving it on to Wednesday's agenda. Looked at this over several months now, and so I'm fine with proceeding with...
Mr. Clayton, how do you feel?
I would agree.
Commissioner Graves? Yep, we'll move it on to Wednesday's agenda.
Thank you.
All right. That moves on to comments by our city manager.
Yes, you do.
Well, you didn't have to move. You didn't have to move.
The city manager and I are talking about doing a couple of updates related to the base grant.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Thank you, Dennis, for being here.
We've got a couple of projects that are in motion, so we wanted to update a little bit. First of all, the Cottonwood lift station. Where we are with that at this point in time is we have bought a... Brought... Bought, yeah, we did buy them. A contractor onboard, Legacy, is the contractor that is doing the work. They have started, they have broken ground, contracts are signed, and we are in motion on the Cottonwood lift station. They were going to start with boring under the river. And with some of the weather that we've experienced and those kinds of things, they're actually now working. If you'll notice as you go east and west on 68 Highway, there by the Logan Lift, right there by Neosho County, they've got pipe laying there, and they are working from there back to the lift station. And that may be a moving target as we get along. They wanted to get underneath the river before we get rains and the water comes up in the river, and so they're working that direction. Biggest thing to note here is that the progress is being made. Next was the water tower out at Proximity Park, and we opened bids, I guess it's been a couple of weeks ago now. But contracts today, tomorrow, we'll be headed to South Dakota. We have picked a contractor, waiting for them to sign the contracts. They will come back to us, reviewed by our city attorney. We will sign those contracts, and that project will be underway. McGuire was the contractor that was chosen. I would remind that both of these contracts did come in significantly under engineer's estimate. It's a good thing, but also remember that the $5 million that we got in the base grant was not enough to do all of the projects that we are trying to get done here. This helps a lot by those bids coming in underneath, but we will still, at the end of the day, have some costs. So that's kind of to update you.
The water tower came in significantly last night in the engineers.
About $700,000.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, it came in about $700,000 under the engineer's estimate, and actually they were almost that under everybody else's bid.
Oh, yeah, they were.
But this is a national company that does this all the time.
And Director Landis says, but our point person with Kansas Gas Service.
So just a quick update on their project. They're moving in the right direction as well. They have bid the project. They're working on access, right-of-way access, and they are ready to move on construction as soon as they can nail down all the details of between those two things. So their bids did come in a wide range of bids as well, just like some of our projects, but slightly less, I believe, than what they had originally planned, but also holding out for concerns of what might have other costs might come along their way. So we're just sticking with the same project estimate at this point.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Are you sure, Dennis?
Pretty sure.
Okay. All right. That'll move on to comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Taylor?
None at this time.
Commissioner Graves?
No comment.
Commissioner Clayton?
None at this time.
I approach him skid more.
I just want to congratulate all my cave friends and the people around this table. They finally got a win.
Tomorrow. That's all I'm going to say, is tomorrow. Tomorrow, I know your number. Now I'm calling you.
Listen, till next Monday, we're our favorite team color.
So also, is that... Do you have any other comments?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
What's up, Rob? What's up, Chief? Okay, just making sure.
Also, on our comments by our city commissioners, commissioners here, we have a mayor-mayor pro temp selection process. I believe it's just a discussion that was mentioned at our night meeting last month, and if we wanted to continue that discussion, certainly we can do that now. So who'd ever like to go first?
I can start if you don't mind, if everybody can hear me. I know when I had brought up my concerns, it was more so... I think the way that we have done it in the past has worked just fine, and I would like to see it continue that way in kind of a path to where, you know, each year we select our mayor, you know, the following year the pro temp moves up into mayor, and we select a new pro temp. But I would be open to other ideas as well.
I would follow suit on that kind of essentially tiered approach. And even would be open to something in terms of with the election, obviously our citizens, the number of votes each of us get are a reflection of support from the community. And I would be open to somehow having that be brought in. If it's a top vote getter becomes pro temp, you know, not the first year, obviously, that they're in, maybe that second year, and they would move up or something along those lines, how you could structure something that, obviously, when the citizens speak, whoever they vote for the most, you know, there's obviously support behind that person. To be on this board as well as potentially serve for mayor, I would feel justified, I guess, saying that. So I would be open to looking at something along those lines of figuring out a structure that way as well.
Mr. Finch, is there anything... Can you kind of go over just a 30,000-foot view of how it says that we're supposed to, I guess, make this decision?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Ottawa is a commission manager form of government city, and what that means is that you have no directly elected mayor. You have five commissioners who are elected in at-large districts. The day-to-day management of the city is handled by the city manager, who has all personnel authority. And contrast that with a strong mayor form of government, where you have a directly elected mayor who serves sort of usually a four-year term, and that position has some more authority over the city manager or city administrator is usually the title in that case because the administrator's powers are not the same as a manager's. In cities that are governed by a commission manager form of government, there's still a need for someone to preside at the meetings of the governing body, and there's still a need for someone to perform the ceremonial functions of the mayor, speaking at groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings, and representing the city as kind of the de facto elected head of the city. So most of those cities do select one of their members to be mayor, and typically for those instances where the mayor cannot be present, you select the mayor pro temp to serve for a period of time. Statutes do not specify how that selection process takes place. That's left to each individual city and their governing body to decide. Ottawa has in the past, remember, there was a time when we didn't have... We had three city commissioners and not five, and so when Ottawa moved to five, one of the customs that kind of emerged, because you have two commissioners elected each term for four years and one for two years, so you always have three commissioners on the ballot, was that the top vote getter in the election would become mayor the following year. The second-place person would be pro temp, and you would then have a rotation that was kind of durable, and the public would be doing what Commissioner Clayton said, in that they'd be weighing in on, you know, who were they supporting, who got the most votes, and that person would be in line to be the mayor. That is a custom. That is not something that you ever put in an ordinance or made a requirement, and your ordinance does not specify how the governing body is to select the mayor and mayor pro temp. So it is certainly up to each of you as you go along. You have talked in the past about whether or not you want a system in place, and that's certainly something you could revisit if you wanted to. You could put it into ordinance, or if you want to keep the flexibility, you could make it a custom and practice that you all engage in and have it be kind of one of those unwritten rules, but have a more refined system. And that could even be something that you would put in a resolution, for example, so it would not be binding, but it would set out what it is you want to have happen. You can also continue to go down the road as you have been, and that is you decide each year what happens. And you have had two instances in the recent past where you've had someone serve more than one term as mayor. Mayor Crowley is obviously beginning his second year, and Commissioner Taylor, when she was mayor, served part of a second year. It does not... It did not used to happen that often unless the mayor left for some reason, and then the pro temp would fill out the remainder of the mayor's term and then their term if the governing body selected them. So you have a couple of options, and I know the discussion the other night kind of focused on, you know, that desire for change, and I will tell you that one of the reasons that the commission manager form of government requires that change is because it is not a strong mayor form of government, and it is not an office that... The longer you have an individual staying in that office, whether it's the knowledge of the going on of the city, whether it's the access to the information, whether it's being seen as the ceremonial head of the city, the commission manager form of government is designed to change that office out frequently because really you're more of a, maybe a first among equals when you're the mayor, and you're all, this is a flat organization at the top. There's five commissioners, and you're supposed to work in harmony together so that a majority of you makes the decisions, and no one of you is really any more powerful by virtue of being in the mayor's chair than you would be by virtue of just being a commissioner. So that's kind of the overview, the 30,000-foot view.
So I guess, well, sure, is what Commissioner Clayton, Commissioner Graves were saying, a little bit more maybe of a structured path toward this, which in some way we've honored and sometimes we've been getting from. I know I never want to be a tenuous conversation. I don't want to get that point, but I think it's what I meant hearing from you all is to go back. Now, again, if I remember right, I think I was at like the 2013, and I had the most votes, I could be mayor the next year, but I needed, myself, needed more time on the commission before I took that chair. And I'm thinking you're probably saying the same way, you want a year or two, you've always been on here before, before you take on that position, even pro temp, because you'd be called up, you never know when, I guess, it could be the case. So, yeah, I see what you're saying. It would be more unpredictable structured path is what you're saying, right? Am I hearing you right, or is that...
Yeah, and I think, and I like the idea of like a proclamation, I think, like that, where it's not binding, but there's almost something tangible to kind of say, more like a guideline than more an ordinance, you know, obviously.
Yeah. Emily, is that kind of way, did I describe your feelings accurately?
Yeah, I think that covers it. Yeah, I mean, setting some sort of... We've had kind of a precedent before, but it was never, you know, we kind of unofficially, you know, had it in our minds, but never written out in any sort of way, and I don't know if that's the best way to do it or not, but it may take some stress off of future commissions even by doing so.
And we've had commissions before where not everybody has been mayor, right? I've known several times, there were several people that maybe didn't want to be, and they couldn't stand the position, and that's fine. There's no reason for them to be pressured to move up in any way, in any structured form at that point, too.
So I also spoke at the meeting regarding this particular process and the process when we were re-electing, and it does concern me. And I, the last... I know we had City Hall Day on Wednesday, but then on Thursday and Friday, I spent two days with fellow elected officials across the state. There's 22 of us on the league board, and we got allotted together time on Thursday and Friday. So was able to do a really unofficial poll and have some conversations with them about how it is that they work through their process. Now, just as our city attorney had indicated, several of them are from a mayor strong form of government, and so they just automatically just serve as mayor. We are not part of that. And so we did have other individuals that are a part of that board that serve in a commissioner-manager style of government. I do think having a plan, kind of memorializing a plan or a system in some kind of resolution form is important. I think it's fair to the individuals around the table for planning, for knowing what's coming next. I, you know, I like to... I have goals set out for this year and then the next two years and five years, and maybe I'm the only person that sets goals like that. But I do think it's important to kind of know a plan and a kind of a system on how that works. I recognize that things may come up, and that that may not be... We may not be able to go by that every single time, but I think as a habit, we want to make it so that we honor what the voters said. They said, you know, we want this to be, we want the office to be refreshed every single year, and I think we need to honor what the voters said.
I see that. I think the voters, you know, they put us five around the table also to make the decisions for, you know, the public as a whole, and I think ultimately it comes down to nominations. That, you know, we have that discussion about reorganization, and we make nominations, and if, you know, folks around the table don't like the nominations as made, they need to vote no. I mean, it's that simple. You know, there's a... We say it all the time, there's a time that, you know, we're sometimes guilty of, you know, being Kansas nice too much. But if that's truly how, you know, individuals feel, then that's how, you know, that's how they should vote, whether, you know, it's, I don't want to upset somebody or whatever else. So in my mind, the voters do get a say. They don't get the direct say, but they get the say through us as they do with anything else that we make a decision on, you know, day in and day out. So I'm just concerned, I think, if we did the highest vote getter, and then we did, you know, the next vote getter goes mayor and then mayor pro temp, how that would work out, because, you know, Mike made, and Mike made a valid point of, you know, being the highest vote getter. He didn't want to be, so he said no, but what happens if that first-timer is the highest vote getter and says, yeah, I do want to be? And they're not really prepared to be in this position. So then what do we do at that point? Because at that point, we'd made a decision, say, highest vote getter is mayor next year no matter what.
From what I understand, that's why you put it into a resolution. I kind of, this is the best practice, and this is the outline that we're going to follow.
So then we go back to, so then it would go back to a nomination at that point. They may say, yes, I'm the highest vote getter, it's part of the resolution, but then it would be a nomination amongst the five sitting at that table to make that decision, kind of like we have now. So no matter what, I mean, we would still have, there could possibly be some sort of conflict at that point.
Yeah, I think in that, in my mind, it would be like they're auto-filled. And so then you'd essentially, you would still vote no, like you mentioned, you would still vote no, but those nominations would be like auto drafted, for lack of a better term for a sports analogy, you know?
Yeah.
It would kind of be filled in and something along those lines. And so, kind of like Commissioner Taylor had mentioned, like in the resolution, like a framework, I think, is probably a way I would use to describe kind of the structure of how it happens.
And still with the right to vote differently from what we agreed. And I think that's true. I mean, if we had someone freshly elected and they had the total highest votes, and they want to be the mayor that first year, November to January, we could vote no at that point. We could say, no, I think you're ready, I'm going to vote no for that nomination if they're nominated, and we'll just go from there to build it up. But the thing, too, I want to remember is that everyone has equal power. It's not like you're Speaker of the House, you can allow certain things. It's not like you're Speaker of the House, you can allow certain things to be right to come before the vote. You get the best parking spot. Yeah, yeah. But it's like, one time I got a piece of paper on my car, it said, someone must think I'm a really good parking person, and it said, parking fine. But I think it's important to know that we all have equal power, we each bring up items, suggest things, and it's not like you have more power than the rest of the city.
Well, I mean, I think I'm hearing that we would like to see some sort of resolution that might, you know, give some direction to the commissioners. If I'm incorrect, please step in, but maybe have legal, draw up a resolution that we could kind of review and then see how, see what we think and review it. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Comments by the mayor? I've got two things I'd like to discuss. First of all, commissioners, we had a public comment come in last week about the chicken resolution, I believe it is. It's something that we could, if we kind of give a consensus to our community development department, they can kind of review it and kind of review it, tell us, you know, what they think, if there's any changes. How do we feel about that? Do we want to send it back to them for some review?
And they actually have done some research, what's in other cities, so I think that's important for you to see also.
Commissioners, we okay with sending up the community development to give us more information?
Yeah.
Okay. And then other one. So we, Mr. Finch, could you kind of start us off with Diane Coats, please, the projects over on First Elm, or the lots that we sold over on First Elm?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, you'll recall that you had solicited bids for the sale of, I believe it's 103 and 107 North Elm, two lots over there. The Coats family were the only bidders. Back in November, I supplied them with a draft contract, they wanted some minor changes. I made those. My hope was to get it closed before Christmas so that it was all completed in 2022. We then did not hear back from Ms. Coats for a while. She finally said she wanted to take it to an attorney and have them review the contract, said that was fine. She said, we're not going to make that closing date. I said, just write in the new date and initial it, you know, and send it back. She then told me, probably late December, that she wanted to see the title commitment from the title company prior to signing the contract. And I explained that every contract for any sale of land that we've done in the time that I've been your city attorney, we do it in the standard way, which is you sign the contract, the contract goes to the title company, the title company prepares the title work. If there's something problematic, we either have the opportunity to fix it as the seller or the buyer has the opportunity to walk away from the deal. And you'll recall that here we were talking about less than $10,000 in this, in this purchase. So I don't believe there's any title encumbrances, but if there were, we had the opportunity to fix them, or if Ms. Coats did not have any earnest money in the transaction, she would be able to just cancel the contract and walk away. She told me that her attorney was requiring that we do it this way. I asked who her attorney was, because in the ethics of my profession, once she's represented by counsel, I need to talk with her counsel and not with her. She indicated that was an attorney in the area. When I reached out to the attorney, she said no, she hadn't engaged them, and that she intended to so that I could continue talking with her. So on January 3rd, I sent a contract that featured a February, I think, 15th or so closing date, and explained to her that if she wanted to purchase the property, she needed to sign the contract, that we would proceed in the same fashion with this deal that we had done with every other deal. And that would give her 45 days or so. I said I would get it to the title company as soon as it was signed, so we could get the title commitment for her review. And reiterated again that if it was unsatisfactory, when she saw it, she could walk away from the deal, or we would try to make it right. And I have not heard anything back from her. I told her if she did not sign the contract, there would be no sale. And I've not heard back from her. This is now January 30th. So that's where it stands.
Commissioners, hearing that, I would suggest that we also walk away from the deal. I guess let's, how do the other commissioners feel about that at this point?
Well, I don't know that we're walking away from any deal, because I think she's walked away. I mean, she's had 28 days or 27 days to respond, which is not 27 hours. It's almost four weeks.
I agree. So.
I would suggest you just move on to another method of disposing of the land.
Commissioner Graves?
I agree with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Clayton?
I agree.
Mayor Pro Temp, skip more.
That's fine, do we have a second bidder? I don't remember. We don't.
There was no second bidder. I would just ask if you're going to do that, and you go ahead, and, I mean, you've tried to negotiate if you'd just have a motion and a vote on rejecting the Coats bid because she's not executed a contract.
So moved.
Wait a second.
All second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Commissioners, do you want to discuss on how we'd like to move forward with these lots, or do we just want to keep them? Do you want to think about it for a little bit and come back? All right, that's all I had. We will, we will move into an executive session for a matter of 10 minutes for attorney-client privileges, which will include our finance director, our city manager, and our legal counsel.
Thank you.
For, I'll give a couple minutes, I don't want to look at that clock. I'll give a couple minutes, we will reconvene in here at 5:30 and make the motion that we move into executive session for a matter of 10 minutes for attorney-client privileges, which once again includes our finance director, city manager, and legal counsel.
Starting at 5:30?
No, 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 we will reconvene in here at 5:30. So give a couple minutes. Okay, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Nice job, Dennis.
No, I.
No, I.